I'll order the board meeting of March 10, 2015. They stand to say, "Play the leadins."
I play the leadins to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, the religious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting by filling out the how-to address the Board of Education form that is provided in the back table prior to each meeting. Please note, the Board of Education members will not respond directly to public comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Does anyone wish to make a public comment? Seeing none, administration.
All right, first, it was a sad day today. Last night, one of our freshman students, Ben Eber, passed away after a violent battle with cancer. There will be a community vigil held on Wednesday, tomorrow evening. They love it at the United Methodist Church just around the corner, and at 7:30. In addition, students are being encouraged to wear white in memory of that on Friday. So that's going on. And not to steal Heidi's thunder, but there is a foundation event coming up at the end of the month. The victory and recognition celebration for the season, kind of for the grant. And so I'm going to pass these out if you want to take some. And I encourage you to attend. First, a movie held at Bardwood Ford this year in their new showroom. It's an exciting opportunity for us to celebrate. And Stephen and I are hopeful to receive a big check that night. So we'll see that happen.
Board of Education members.
Couple other things from the foundation on March 12. That's Thursday. Pizza House is doing a fundraiser. And so whether you call in and order, or whether you eat there, a portion of the proceeds go to the foundation. So and then we shared with the information, it's in recognition. And yeah, so that's most covered this morning.
I spent some time perusing the internet and the school websites today, and it was a lot of fun. I hadn't looked in a while, unfortunately, but just to see all that was going on for March is Reading Month and the shows that the kids were doing. Just a very fun time of year for such an awful time of year, I think, for kids reading. So I was happy to see that.
Just, we have some meetings with the PPOs coming up to talk about the bond development process. We have the high school on Wednesday night, Pleasant Ridge on Thursday morning, middle school on Friday morning. And then next Tuesday night will be Harvest. And then we're also going to have a little talk with the Celine seniors on Wednesday at 18:00. So I just need to schedule Woodland Meadows, and then we would have covered all the buildings.
Karen?
I'm just excited to say I joined in today last time this year.
Seniors on that downward slide, right?
Hopefully, or hopefully not.
About a month ago, there was a release of the police report that the media covers typically. There was an item in there about a knife at the middle school. And I read some of the comments about the incident at the middle school. And it's apparent once again that students and parents are not reading the handbook. There are, some of the comments alluded to the fact that, you know, oh, seems tough for a middle schooler. There are a lot of laws contained or referenced in the handbook that the administration and the board is required to do certain things. And having a knife over three inches anywhere in a weapon-free zone of school property requires the administration to recommend expulsion. So there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So I think it's time for parents, I mean, they signed forms if they read the handbook, but it's probably time to maybe reread it. We're going to do a little bit more of a reach-out in the fall when kids are registering and stuff. Justin Delhae, who's absent, suggested we put a quiz on the card to be sure that there's questions from the handbook, to be sure the parents checked them off or read them before they sign. So that's my public service announcement for today. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, or any non-motion carries.
Scheduled reports, our first one is our poetry out loud winner, Haley Box.
How Paul Shelley venerable?
Yeah, so Haley will be here. She's at Drama. And I told her she's a little worried about it, as to just get here when you get here. She'll be here by someone, somewhere in between. Thanks.
Thank you, Shelley.
I'll second. I give us the National Clearinghouse, Naomi Norman.
Naomi, I'll quick question. Naomi Norman worked with the WIC for several years and has actually made a similar presentation to the board relative to this information from the National Clearinghouse, I think, two or three years ago, three years ago. And it's very enlightening information. I think you'll find it interesting in terms of really looking at what our students do after they leave us. That's always kind of an important question for us to consider and one that's often hard for us to really get, you know, more than just anecdotal information about. So this is one great way that we get to see what our students are doing down the road as it relates particularly to college and career success. So on that note, I'll turn it over to Naomi.
Thanks, Scott. So I picked a few things out of the report, and you each have a copy of that report that I'm going to highlight. I think this is maybe some of the more interesting data that's contained in the report and also, I think, a lot more interesting for everyone in the audience as well. And I think it'll give you a nice overview of where Celine High School graduates really are for six years post-high school. But I want to start by having you guess. So, and this is for everyone in the room, everyone. If you want to get out, all of you with those pens in your hands, it's nice to see all the students. Are you high schoolers?
Yeah.
Even though. So write this down, if you have a pen. What's your best guess? What percent of Celine High School students go to college right after completing high school? So they go that fall. What's your guess? What percent of kids go on to college right after high school, that next fall? I'm serious. Write that down. She knows the answer. We're going to coach you. The next question is, what percent go to college any time in the first two years after they graduate from high school? You know, so there's some kids who aren't going to go right away. They're going to do something else, maybe work, join out or do something. But they show up and they end up going to college within two years. What do you think that percentage is? What percent of Celine graduates get a college degree? They're not going to qualify this, within six years of graduating from high school. All right. Top three colleges for Celine High School grads. Where are they choosing to go? Top three. What do you think they are? And the last question is, when they graduate after those six years, what degree, besides a bachelor's and an associate's? What's the field of study? What was their area that they got that degree in? This is brand-new data for Celine. I haven't even shared that one with Julie or anyone in the district. Take a guess. All right. So we're going to jump to the first one. Percent that go to college right after completing high school. Someone want to guess? Call something out. What do you think? Fifty percent? Anyone thinking higher, lower?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Eighty-five is a good number. They have the reports up here. There we go. This is from Celine High School. I know you have two programs in the district. But this, and the most current, it's right at eighty-five. So this is a really good opportunity for me to tell you where this data comes from. So what happens is, there's an organization called National Student Clearinghouse. And they actually collect enrollment and persistence data from every college, nearly every college across the United States. They're up in the ninety-six to ninety-eight percent of all public and private colleges in the country, report their data to National Student Clearinghouse. This is also the same place, if you want to verify, that that person you hired actually has a degree from that particular university. This is where you would go to find out. If you want to verify that that person who says they're enrolled in a program, when you're hiring them, you can verify whether they are currently enrolled in that university or program. So it's used by businesses, it's used by a lot of people, but it's becoming more and more an amazing set of data for school districts. And it's really entered the K-12 arena, I'd say, in the last four and five years. And in fact, we've been purchasing it in Washtenaw County probably for about six years now because we're really interested. And it's been a very important focus for us to know, are we, as a system, doing what we think we're doing in terms of preparing kids for the future? Whether it's career or college success. And so this was a really important set of data for us collectively, I think, for each district, but also us as a county to know how we're doing. So we've been looking at it for quite a while. The state, last year, decided to start to purchase it as a state. And so it's also being made available on the public state website, the myschooldata.org. I don't know if you're familiar with that site, but the state is also available there. And what I'm sharing with you is a report that we get directly from National Student Clearinghouse, but the state also has the data publicly available. So everything here is public, very public. Anyone can go look it up if they're interested. So the second question that we want to ask is, where are our kids going to school? What kind of colleges are they choosing? And in our county, the really big dichotomy, I guess, in colleges is whether students choose a two-year or a four-year college. And I'm going to show you here, for Celine graduates, what we see is, we have for the year 2014. And when I say 2014, when you look at those years across the bottom, that's the group that graduated from high school in that year. So that's your cohort of graduates from June 2014. Eighty-five percent went to college, seventy percent went to four-year universities, and sixteen percent went to a two-year college. What's interesting about your dataset here is that it seems like there's a trend happening. More kids are going to four-year colleges over the last few years, and fewer are going to the two-year. It's just interesting to know.
Uptick in the economy?
Maybe. Maybe they're getting accepted into the four-year college. So this is the next question that I asked you. Percent of students enroll within two years after high school? So it bumps up. For you, it bumps up five percentage points. So it's now up to ninety percent of Celine graduates are in college within two years after graduating from high school. Now that change, you get about a two-and-a-half or three percent going to four-year colleges, and a two-and-a-half percent, three percent going to the two-year college. So it's kind of split evenly between those two college types. I decided to also include the alternative high school because I didn't want to forget them. And you have actually one of the highest college going rates for alternative programs. So that's a really nice number to see. Actually, you can see it's increasing from where we were in about 2009. The number of kids in the program is different now. There's a few more kids than there were in 2009. And I'm not going to be able to report the six-year cohort data because we didn't have it, we didn't have cohort data. So I think you didn't have graduates or enough in 2008 to do the cohort. So one of our strongest indicators for how unprepared kids are for college is whether they make it from freshman to sophomore year. Because that is the year that if kids feel really unprepared, they won't come back for sophomore year. And we know this, this is kind of a, in the college world, this is a really important indicator. Colleges, you know, they work really hard to have a high retention rate. And you can see for your graduates that depending on the cohort year, you're over ninety percent retention. So they're going and they're staying. It's a very high and really solid number to see.
You see, we're trending, and not just trending down significantly, but we're trending upwards in terms of the numbers of students selecting a four-year college versus this two-year college a little bit. And this other, this recidivism rate is kind of coming out. Do you, if a student is enrolled as a four-year freshman, jumps to a two-year sophomore or the following year, are they captured in that data? Do you know? I know if they switch schools, they're still captured, right?
They're captured if they're in the dataset again the next year. And honestly, you know, you have enough, there's a small amount of variation in your cohorts, just looking, because we now have about, we started in 2005. So we have the class of 2005 through the class of 2014 right now. And I was looking at the whole of it as I was putting this together. And your numbers kind of go up and down over all those years by maybe like this, a four percentage point by cohort. And I was looking at it, and I was like, is it a real trend or isn't it a trend? And I would, the only trend I would say I feel like there's a trend is the last three years, more kids are going to four-year colleges. I didn't see anything that really jumped out, that wouldn't be explained by cohort. Now, this chart, and I actually gave board members a copy printed. I think you might want to pull it out because it's a hard one to see. I'm going to go up and explain this chart because I think it's a really interesting and important one. Can you all see that okay? It's really colorful, but I'm just going to go explain these colors. So what this is telling us, and we're looking at the class of 2008. And the class of 2008, what happened to them each year after they graduated? Were they in college, not in college, were they already graduated? And so what we see here is, in this green, this is the group, the green group. So that year, eighty-eight point two percent of kids went to college. They were captured in the dataset as enrolling in college. Eleven point eight were not in the dataset. So they're not captured in college enrollment. They could go to a trade school, but isn't in the dataset. They could be in the Army. You know, anyone who goes into the armed services wouldn't show up here. They could be working, they could be traveling. So that's the first year. Then we come to the next year. A few new students who weren't enrolled in the first year actually enrolled in the second year. Then, this orange area, these are all the kids that were enrolled the first year and are still enrolled. So yep, they're still working at it. There's a teeny, tiny little band here, this red band. Those are kids who graduated in year two. So they got a two-year degree. They might have earned a lot of credit in high school. Like, they could have earned credit in high school and crunched really hard and got a four-year degree in two years. We see a lot of that with our early college programs. Or they could be your student who went to the community college and finished their two-year program. Up here, you have this little yellow band. Those are kids from this green band who attended, but they're not attending in the next year. So they dropped out, or they stopped out. That might be another way to think about it. And again, there's a little group that just isn't in the dataset. So then you move to the next year, and you start to see this red band, by this third year out, five point two percent of Celine graduates have a degree. You see, we picked up a few more new students. Well, a whole bunch continued. A few more in the yellow dropped out, or stopped out. We have this blue bar. So the blue bar that's emerging here, our kids who attended, stopped out, came back. So we have kids who'll take a break and then come back. That happens to be a pattern. And in your district, you can kind of see this blue bar, almost two percent of your students will go to college, stop out for a year or more, and then come back. So over time, by the time we get to our fourth year, this thirty-five point nine would be a typical kids who graduated, you know, they went to a four-year college, they got everything done in four years, and they graduated in four years. Almost thirty-six percent of this cohort graduated in four years. But look at this. This is for all of you high schoolers in the room. Look at how many graduated in five years. And then you actually hit your graduation rate, your official graduation rate, because it's a six-year cohort that we're looking at, at that sixth year. They use a six-year cohort? Because look at this, what would happen if colleges used a four-year cohort? You see how low? They would have to report this thirty-nine or thirty-five point nine instead of maybe, for some colleges, a more accurate cohort number. Really looks like a much larger number. So six years is kind of the magic space, if I think about it that way. You still, of course, have kids graduating in the seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth year. Kids who started, stopped out, and back. A lot of that happens for our students as life happens to them. The thing that I worry about, and it's something that I think your high school can think about, is this group here, the sixteen point five, in the sixth year, the kids that went but didn't stay and they didn't graduate. You know, what happened? Are they happily employed? Is life good? Or were they not ready for college and it just was an opportunity lost? So that's kind of an area. But I can tell you, for, you're probably in all of the fourteen districts that I work with. I work in both Washtenaw and the East and counties. Your data here looks absolutely without question as a district is the strongest. So that's a pretty strong number. Always room for improvement.
Is there a way for us to analyze that? One of the theories that we think are related to the college, that everyone needs a college, a career mantra that's been out, is you've noticed the last couple of years in state, in particular others, have kind of slumped back. They need to continue education, and ultimately, institutions are heading to four-year colleges that perhaps are in pursuit of a two-year institution, some type of skill-building opportunity. We want to make sure that that sixteen point isn't about a four-fifth initially. Were they given an opportunity, were they placed wrong, so to speak, when it comes to their college choice relative to their, whether their academic preparation or inclination and/or their skills?
So yes, that's a really, really important question. And I actually think it's, it is the question at this point. Are we preparing our students for life and career in college that matches aspirations, interests, abilities, skills? I think the worst thing we can do is set a kid up for failure and leave them with a hundred thousand dollars of debt, right? Because that is just absolutely not, not where to go. So yes, okay. The state of Michigan, about fourteen months ago, made public two, a few people, people with access, you have to be basically a building principal or a superintendent, an extremely large dataset for each school that outlines what happens to each kid every semester post-high school if they attend a Michigan public school. So we can look at that dataset now, and we can look and see, you know, are there any patterns here? Are we noticing that, oh my gosh, all of our kids are passing the math test, take regular math at U of M, but they're not passing that calc class at U of M? So maybe they're getting into it, but not successful. Like, are there patterns like that that are really getting in the way of their success? And because I've been digging into that data, we're trying to figure out, it's not even easy to access. You really have to dig into it and kind of look at it student by student. But we did that with one district, and we have been floored by what we're seeing. And Scott, I cannot tell you how many stories we're seeing that look like that. Like, we're watching a student, and the teachers, we're sitting in our room with a particular teacher who is looking at her student who went off to a four-year college and clearly was signing up for science, everything's science. And, you know, it looked like a pre-med or a science track. And that student failed four out of the six classes. She took three, no, she took four the first semester and three the second, and failed three the first semester and two the second. And we were looking at that going, oh my gosh, you know, that's got to be really devastating. And that's also a lot of money because none of those credits count toward finishing. So we looked the next year, and she switched to psych. She was taking, you know, like, a psych class, a sociology class, to an English class. Like, she just switched to like auto sciences and into the humanities, and she was hitting As's. And we're looking at that going, holy cow. You know, like, the counselor at the table was like, wow, I miss that completely. Do you know? Like, it's one of those things. And if you follow this young woman forward, she ended up getting her Bachelor's degree in psychology. And we just thought, you know, it does matter. Like, how are we helping them? How are we helping them prepare? Are they going to the right place? There's another story of a young girl that we tracked out of Brighton, and she had a similar path. Like, she went to a four-year, really rigorous university, and ended up coming back and going to Eastern, and ended up leaving Eastern and going to Washtenaw, and ended up getting her degree at Washtenaw, and it was in culinary science. But the teacher knew the girl, and really bright, wonderful, but she was passionate about cooking. And she wanted to be a chef all the way along. Like, it just took her that to get herself figured out. So I do think there's something to be said for, are we preparing them? And then are we helping them figure out where they want to go? You know, are we being intentional about those steps? This is something to think about, I think, certainly something to look at.
Is there any way of tracking those trades, skills, and stuff like that, any of those kind of kids?
So in Washtenaw County, a lot of our trade programs actually are certificate programs at Washtenaw Community College. So we pick up a lot of our kids who are doing the trades programs in this dataset. And then when Michigan provides that additional data about what happens inside their programs, it actually, you can actually see that they did construction technology at WCC, three sessions, got the certificate. So you can actually see that trajectory. We actually, a really interesting pattern we noticed was, one of the districts was really digging into their career and technical education program, and they did an integrated math with their career and technical ed, and really very intentional about it. And they noticed their kids were more successful in their math when they went to college. And we're really wondering, like, what does that mean? Like, that they're having so much success in an applied math program, even when they go to college? Like, it set them up really well. So there's also things like that you can learn. So your official graduation rate for the class of 2008, which is the six-year graduation rate for 2014, right, is sixty-two percent. That's really... That's really, really solid. But this is how compares.
And then you have another 13.5% who are still in school.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
75% have either done it or are still working at it.
So here's how, same cohort, 2008. I picked out a few of the schools that tend to score similar to you. And you can see that particular year, Pioneer, that's 64, but otherwise very consistent with the other schools in this area. All right. The top college for Celine graduates is Washtenaw Community College. Are you surprised?
No.
No, no? Second being University of Michigan, third being Michigan State. This list is actually basically taking the last 10 years. So it's actually looking across all 10 years and seeing across all 10 years which one has ended up having the most involvement. Any surprises in there? Eastern, Coats Graham Valley, Western, Central, Ferris Hope, Purdue. So you have one that's outside of Michigan there. Ohio State, Miami, Adrian, Saginaw Valley, University of Toledo. This list goes on and on and on. So I have to talk a bit. I have to, I always feel like I need to explain this. This is really important again for all the students in the room. So Eastern Michigan, this is a great example. After four years, and this is the most current public data from BNU, and it's available at collegeresults.org. If anyone's looking at college here, awesome website, seriously, you should write that down. Collegeresults.org compares universities and their statistics. So if you go to Eastern, your chance of graduating, basically 12% graduating in four years. 28 in five years. And then that's their official graduation rate is 37.2. And I guess I want to make the point here that one of the other factors to consider is some colleges and universities actually have much higher graduation rates than others. So this question of whether kids are prepared or are colleges ready? I think it goes both ways. I think high schools have a lot of work, I think we have a lot of work. But I also think our colleges and universities do as well. We both kind of share some responsibility in those areas. So just to be clear, looking at your list, you have a lot of these colleges in your top list. The six-year graduation rate from Michigan State is 79.4. You see, Central, 57, Eastern, 37, U of M is up to 90, 57, Western, 55, Grand Valley is 65. So you have to kind of take that into consideration. If you beat that graduation rate with your students coming from this district, I think that's a lot. All right. Field of study. So what we did was, we went in and looked at each single kid who graduated from Celine High School. Actually, it would be graduated, graduated from Celine. So this would include your alternative ed kids too, if there were any in there. And we actually looked, we had the list of each kid and then what their degree was. You have one kid in this group has a PhD. They're in the group of a PhD, sort of, have received that degree. So 26% of the ones that actually, where they actually have the data in there, were in health sciences. 23 in social sciences, education, psychology. 13% in a hard science, technology, engineering, or math. Other liberal arts, general studies, humanities. That one is a really, this general studies is what they give anyone who has a general associate's degree from WCC. So the bulk of that 11% are those kids with the associate's degree from WCC. We didn't know how to categorize that, general studies. Business, economics, marketing, 10%. Communications, public policy, or media, 6%. Creative visual or performing arts was 6%. Although, the surprise in the data set was for electives or compings. This class took a lot of art. So like, when we looked at the courses, there was a lot of art classes mixed in. So I don't know if that's a Celine thing, like, do you have really strong art teachers? Or is it just what the students do? I don't know. Natural resources, 2%. Construction, manufacturing, there's your construction technology. 2%. Computers networking is also a trade certificate. And then we didn't have anyone do the transport field. So I thought you'd find that kind of interesting, knowing what your kids are doing.
My daughter's class is.
It's your daughter's class, so this means a lot to you. For me, the fact that 26 did health sciences, 26% plus a 13% with science, technology, engineering, we're up at 20, 39-ish in a science-related field, just reminds me how important for our community the science work is, starting now. All right. I included here, you actually can, you have the reports, the national center, but for everyone in the audience, you can go to myschooldata.org and take a look at this data yourself. Look at it, disaggregate it, play with it, do a little bit more, if you would like. Any questions or anything else that you should cover?
No, that's excellent. I mean, it was interesting to look at.
So they stop collecting the data after six years? They just, no, they keep going?
They keep going. In fact, if you look in your report, you can take the class the year before and you'll see it's seven years. Yep. Actually, I was sort of surprised. I went on, yeah, like, the class of 2007, you can see in the report. It's listed as page 29. So we only go back to 2007, it looks like. The state data set goes back to about 2004.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll circle back up to our first item, and Haley's here now, so.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you Haley Fox. And Haley Fox was our Poetry Out Loud winner for Celine High School this year. And she will be competing this Friday at Poetry Out Loud state competition. And so she's here to give it a dry run. And she's going to share some of her poetry with you. So thank you for having me.
"The Obligation to Be Happy" by Linda Piston. "It is more onerous than the rites of beauty or housework, harder than love. What you expected of me casually, the way you expect the sun to come up, not in spite of rain or clouds, but because of them. And so I smile, as if my own fidelity to sadness were a hidden vice, that downward tug on my mouth. My old suspicion that health and love are brief irrelevancies. No more than laughter in the warm dark strangled the dawn. Happiness, I try to hoist it on my narrow shoulders again, a knapsack, heavy with gold coins. I stumble around the house, bump into things. Only Midas himself would understand." All right. My second poem will be "Larken Ask" by Michael Ryan. Reading in the paper, a summary of a five-year psychological study that shows those perceived as most beautiful are treated differently. I think they could have just asked me, remembering a kind of pudgy kid in late puberty, the bloody noses and wise cracks because I wore glasses. Though we all know by now how awful it is for the busty starlet no one takes seriously, the loveliest woman I've lunged with, lamenting the opacity of the body. They can never trust a man's interest, even when he seems not just out for sex. Eyes focus on me above rim of wine glass. And who would want to live like this? And what does beauty do to a man? Don Juan, Casanova, Lord Byron? Those fiery eyes and steel jawlines confront a furnace of self-loathing. All those breathless women rushing to him while hubby's at the office or ballgame, primed to be consumed by his beauty while he stands next to it, watching. So maybe the looks result are best. It's only common sense that happiness depends on some bearable deprivation or defect. And who knows what conflicts great beauty could have caused? What cruelties one might have suffered from those now friends? What unmanageable possibilities smiling at every small turn? So if I get up to draw a Tumblr of ordinary tap water and think, what if this were mector, dripping through delicious burning fingers? Will all I've missed knock me senseless? No, of course not. My final poem is "The New Colossus" by Anna Lazarus. It's kind of famous, it's the Statue of Liberty one. "The New Colossus" by Anna Lazarus. Not like the brazen giant of Greek fame, with conquering limbs astride from land to land. Here, at our sea-washed sunset gates, shall stand a mighty woman with a torch, whose flame is the imprisoned lightning, and her name, Mother of Exiles. From her beacon hand glows worldwide glory. Her mild eyes command the air-bridged harbor that twin cities spring. Keep ancient lands your storied pomp, cries she with silken lips. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the homeless tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." All right, thank you.
Thank you. Topic is the technology survey presentation from the Strive.
Call for the Strive group. And each of you have the technology results. They're going to talk a little bit about the technology survey, maybe. I had the opportunity to meet with this group a couple of weeks ago, and they shared the results with me. We talked about a few things, and we also wanted to share this information with the board.
Are we okay here?
You are.
All right, awesome. So hi, my name is Annie Lee, and I'm the president of Strive Celine High School.
And I'm Heather Bannon, and I'm the vice president of Strive.
And what Strive is, is we serve as the connection between the student body and the administration. So that's just a little intro to our club. So recently, we created and gave out a survey to the student body about the technological changes being made in the high school. So that would be next-generation-oriented type technological implementations and just an overall survey on how students feel about the technology in their school. So our sample size was 746 students out of about 1,800 students. So that's a pretty good sample size. We'll start with our first question, and we'd love to have questions from the board of the audience along the way. All right, so question one. Is updating computer lab technology a school priority? And this was on a scale of one to five, one being definitely not, and five being definitely yes. So we have 4% saying definitely not, 12% just generally not. The majority of people ranking three and four, respectively 35% and 32%, meaning generally yes, and then 16% saying absolutely yes. So that just means that in general, students feel that we should update our technology, but it's not an immediate concern that needs to be addressed right away.
All right. So question two was, what kinds of technology do you most like using? And then they were allowed to circle all that apply. The choices were iPad, Chromebook, Mac, and Dell. So iPad is at the least with only 116, Chromebooks, 309, Mac, 433, and then Dell, 191. So you can see, kids most prefer Macs, and then right along there are the Chromebooks. So like, for those of you who don't know, Chromebooks are laptops. And then Mac could be, we have desktop Macs at our school that are most commonly used. And so, yeah, kids mostly prefer the Chrome's or the Macbooks.
Do you have any feedback as to why the iPads are?
Yeah. The thing with the iPads, a lot of students are requested to create presentations or work in groups on iPads or do research. And it's really difficult to manage that on such a small screen, touchscreen, all that stuff. So I know that kids definitely prefer being able to use an actual laptop and, yeah.
And typing is a lot easier.
Right, yeah. A little touchscreen is kind of impossible sometimes, as I'm sure you guys experienced too. Okay, so question three was, do you support the technological changes being implemented into the library, such as the comfortable seating area, the large group monitors, and the glass walls being put up? And again, this was on the same scale of one to five. So we had a majority of people saying yes or definitely yes. Yes being about 30%, and definitely yes being about 43%. So as you can see, students like the new trend of updating things, especially in the media center, which is an area where generally people just go to get work done and collaborate and things like that. So it's a good addition.
Okay, so question four, do you know what next-generation classrooms are? And it's split pretty evenly with 56% with yes and 47% with no, 44% with no. And, yeah, we noticed, like, when the new innovative area was put in on the third floor, that a lot of people were kind of like, what is that? And then when you say, like, oh, it's, you know, our next-gen classroom area, some people still didn't know. And then with the new things in the library, we've just noticed there is a lot of unawareness. Or, yeah. So hopefully, with like, striving to survey people, have become more aware of what next-generation classrooms are.
Question five was, do you think that more of our school should resemble areas like the creative cove on the third floor? And this was a huge yes, 70% said yes. And I know a lot of kids, including myself, have used that area. And it's really nice because the colors of paint and the comfortable furniture are really stimulating. And it's nice because it's a very innovative area that also stimulates innovation at the same time. So definite yes for that one.
And then, last question. Do you think that more technology should be available in individual classrooms instead of going to the media center or computer lab? And this was also a big yes, with 73% saying yes. And the thing with that is just, a lot of times when you have to go to a computer lab, it kind of takes away class, it takes away class time and other classes that can bring in Chromebooks. It's a lot more efficient.
So, yeah, any questions?
On the, kind of, on the classroom technology, individual classrooms. To what extent do you think students, you have BYOB, bring your phone, bring, you have your own laptop, and bring it out? How do you think that being able to let it are used by the students?
Well, in my English class, Mr. Hill's AP Lang, we, students bring in laptops. Well, in my English class, Mr. Hill's AP Lang, we, students bring in laptops. I would say that's like the only class I've really seen it in. I've also seen it in my marketing class, but on average, like maybe once or twice a week, one student would have their laptop.
Yeah, it's not that common yet to have people only working on laptops instead of pen and paper. It's not that common yet. It's hard to do research or any type of like schoolwork on a phone. So that's usually not used for school purposes and yeah.
What purpose is what you mean by that?
Well, you take a guess on that one.
Also, kids check their grades a lot.
Yeah, I check my grades all the time. Yeah, all the time.
How did you push the survey out to the students?
We had, yeah, well, there was some difficulty because we actually made copies for each student. And we had the full list from the high school office of everyone's first hours and then distributed them to each first-hour teacher. But then some first-hour teachers didn't feel like giving them out and things like that. So we ended up with only about 800 coming back to us.
For the board to view, we're next meeting at the high school. Before the sixth-term meeting, we have a tour area. So areas of the media center, we'll go through, and then the innovation labs upstairs. So you'll get a chance to kind of see the space that they're talking about in two weeks.
Very helpful information to know and how the kids are receiving all of this material.
That was important.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any way for Strive or for the board to kind of evaluate the responsiveness or the effectiveness of these new generation classrooms? Because I think most students just kind of hear the word and they're seeing these new things that are implemented in the school and it's kind of tying it together. But at the same time, not actually fully knowing what, you know, these new generation classrooms or areas are supposed to do. So is there a way to calculate or just to see, like graph their effectiveness?
Steve, I put you in a spot, but you know, Steve has been one who's really talked a lot about this, you know, this idea of what are the skills necessary? And Heather Calhoun's here as well to, in terms of how are we evaluating the measuring effectiveness and effectiveness?
One of the struggles with all of these schools are sort of trying to assess this work is, what exactly are you assessing? Are you assessing to see if your ACT scores are higher or what? And so we're talking a lot about the building of rubrics to see where classrooms fly in terms of creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking skills. But the trick is now how do we take those rubrics and have teachers assess that level of effectiveness for the projects that students are doing inside the classroom? And that's not like the high school, that's the lower levels too. So I think that is the challenge that we're working on and Heather and the tech team have started to develop some rubrics that tie in some national organizations that are doing this work too. And it's one of the next steps that we're trying to work on as a district to be thinking a little more critically ourselves on how we are going to assess the effectiveness. And what exactly do we want to assess? Because we don't necessarily just want to see that, you know, the standardized tests first go up. Because that's not, that's not the only thing that students need when they graduate from high school. They need other skills. So that, we're working on that. But we can't really say right now that we have that completely figured out and it's something that we're.
And it's very, we're working with districts across the country. And that is kind of what I call the sweet spot right now. So districts like Cine are kind of transitioning into this kind of this 4C space. What does that look like and how do you effectively assess it? But that's a really good question because everybody's asking that question.
It's more of a behavioral assessment. Do you think the kids are aware that collaboration, for example, is something that education's striving for at this point?
I think collaboration, yes, definitely critical thinking. But I think not as many students are aware of the importance of creativity and how the administration is trying to push that. So yeah. On a last note, I'd just like to mention that I think education about next-generation technology at Celine is really important because when those more creative areas, more technologically savvy areas were being implemented into the library, a lot of kids were frustrated with the district saying that we shouldn't be spending our money on this, we're already in debt, why do this? So I think if people understood that that's not where the funds are coming from, they'd be overall more receptive towards next-gen technology being in our school and more educated also, which is always a bonus.
That was a good point. Again, with the foundation support for that. And frankly, putting a lot of money, we not only would have educated their students in terms of, but also raised awareness to the funds that people are giving at these events. But it's a great point you talked about. Make sure we brand it a little bit.
Is there any way you have time to push this down to the seventh and eighth graders maybe at the middle school? I'm just, because they're a little more, I guess, they tend to bring your own device to school a little longer than the kids at high school hiding them. I would be interested to see how they think about it. I think they're exposed to next-gen a little more than the high school.
Right, I think as we go down through the years, or up through the years, I guess. Each year, they get more technologically dependent. I was at the middle school last year for connecting and there's like smart boards and iPads everywhere. And kids really love them and they're very reliant on them. And so I'd like to see how it is at the middle school as well as the upper school level.
Yeah, we could easily put together like a similar survey and redistribute it there.
Pay attention, Mr. Rapp.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
And our next discussion item, board policy committee updates.
Yeah, I will, I will touch on it. The policy discussion really, well, we worked on three. One, we looked at, just to talk openly about our anti-voting policy and we bring back, we had a kind of a decision tree process in our previous iteration of our policy manuals. We'll talk about bringing that back. And we talked about a variety of board-level policies that we wanted to just look at and see how they apply to certain situations. So we did that, took care of that. Any receiving files, because it's not an actual policy change, it's a regulation change. We did alter and tweak the language around graduation requirements. And so 7630R, we refer and used to use in terms of Michigan merit exam. And we've changed that to a broader term because the state has changed it. But understand, right now, we do require students to sit for this kind of battery of tests as a junior if they aren't able to do it during one of the two new-year windows. And they would need to do it as one of the two seat rooms in our four opportunities to do that. And we carved out some exemptions for that related to whether they attend school in previous year and other things. So and we do have a policy meeting coming up a week from Monday, so the 23rd, we're going to gather together.
I'm thinking it would be good, I've been thinking about this this week, to explain why we are requiring, as a school system, you know, the kids to take these tests dependent on graduation. You know, something was coming from the state and maybe repercussions of not getting 90%.
Yeah, we certainly, yeah, we, why would you say, why would we care whether or not students take an assessment if it's not something that necessarily, you know, we, the state holds us accountable to students taking the test? And so we need to make sure that all of our students take the assessment. So previously, and I explained that the policy, previously when the state gave out like a financial reward or award for participating in that exam, it wasn't necessary. People sat for it, it wasn't participation almost. They pulled out the funding associated with that, but kept the criteria, continued to participate in that. If we were to drop below or up a certain percentile, it would have an impact on not only our scores, but certainly have an impact on our really relative to funding and others. So.
So there would be financial censures?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is this a new test or maybe it's not new, but the test that the juniors are taking this?
Yes, yep. And to note, really the policy, the graduation requirement hasn't changed. That's been in place for the last, I think, three years. We changed the words because the Michigan merit exam changed. And so we changed, we carved out and basically made it more generic so that technically isn't the Michigan merit exam anymore. So it didn't apply. And then ultimately, we also carved out some exemptions as students come in at different times, at different schools. The state is flexible in terms of what their expectations are.
I agree about this, we're on my teachers and from my understanding, this is just the test for one year?
Well, not necessarily. So the, this year's test is just the, was the last year of the ACT. There's that's a portion of the three-day battery. Next year, they will be giving the SAT, which really is the RSAT, the revised SAT. And so that's taking the place of the ACT. So technically, this was the last year of the ACT as the kind of lead component. Next year's the RSAT, but that's a three-year agreement with RSAT that that be the test for people who are Michigan next year. It gets even more complex because it gets into this M-step, the other components of it.
I think that's the test that's something else. So is the M-step the test that's just for one?
The one-year test, yeah, as they transition, they're trying to transition from the meat component of it to they're now on this M-step, which was known as the new meat. Next year, in theory, will be some version of more of a, what's called a smarter balanced assessment. Which again, they're trying to move towards more performance tasks in terms of the types of questions that they have versus just strict multiple choice. Trying to make it a more robust assessment, but this is a one-year. Maybe stagecoach stop on the way to whatever's next.
So is there, is there any point in this test if it's only one year? How are we comparing it to other years? How are we knowing that part of students are going upward or going downward?
The relevance of this assessment cycle, and we talked a little bit about it. I'm not going to comment on my, my personal feelings about Michigan Department of Education and really, they're really at the whim of the legislation when it comes to the specific issue. This is not something the Michigan Department would have chosen as a path for the very reason you're talking about. There's just, there's no trend data to look at, it's segmented, you know, it's hard to use it as valuable data, as valuable information. But our waiver from, essentially our federal funds are tied to us, are no child up behind me. We have to give standardized assessments. So we are giving, we gave the M-step. And it'll be very interesting to see what relevant data comes from it. Because there's no, you know, it's nice to look at some trend data tonight, but there'll be no trend data. And ultimately, next year, the data becomes somewhat irrelevant again.
And sorry, I have one more question. So another thing I heard was that the school is randomly selecting students at times to take the M-step. Is that true or?
There might have been a pilot associated with that, but I don't.
Do you want to take it?
No.
For a lot of graders, either there's the performance assessment element that they have waited for this year because they thought that was too much to ask of a lot of the graders because it was going to get into the, you know, 10 hours of testing for that. So they backed down that and some districts are still choosing to participate, but many have said they're not going to. And Celine High School is not going to participate in the performance part this year. But like Superintendent Craven was saying, we'll watch as that transitions because we all are pretty confident that performance assessment is going to be a big part of the direction of assessments. And as you were talking about, how do we know if next-generation classrooms are working? Some of this performance assessment is really geared towards that aspect, working together in groups, being collaborative, critical thinking. So we'll know more as we progress with this type of assessment.
I think my question was more of, I know my teacher was really concerned with how is she going to organize a class when all these different students are taken away at different times? So I know she was, she was just worried about that. And maybe if you could just take certain first hours and certain like whichever hours there were at one time, that would be a lot easier for her to do the plan there.
One thing about it though, at the high school level, just to put it in comparison, Mrs. Alver is working on a schedule that will only take two days of testing at the high school in comparison to what's going on at the elementary school and the middle school. They're more in the neighborhood of five days. So even though it is, we're trying to make it not be as, you know, taken away from class time, it's almost impossible because it is, you know, six, seven hours of testing for you to somehow, you know, figure it out over a course of two weeks. You tried to narrow it down to two days.
The other component, and this is more, we talked, I think a little bit about this, this is a county law. At the county level with our bandwidth, because these are online assessments, we've tried to figure out ways to make sure that every district in the county is not doing it at a certain time because we need to make sure there's that in our bandwidth. So there's a, it's a kind of a significant matrix of testing windows that are kind of populated on who's going to watch, how many students at each district went. That's our own critical thinking performance assessment. Dr. Elber.
Our next discussion item is bus meetings.
Yeah, one of, you know, we had, there was an issue that came up last week. Actually, two weeks ago, but there was a media report last week relative to our 2014 Michigan State Police vehicle inspections. So I did want to prepare a memo to the board with some data backup. We have a large segment of our transportation department here. But the story incident that, and was factually, we had 12 buses that were given yellow tags out of a fleet of 48. And just like in the memo, I do talk about the idea of what a yellow tag means. And if you notice, included in your packet, if, or what those things would be, axle seals, rust, exhaust systems. Those are the types of things that are considered yellow tags and were the most common issues. To note that, you know, if a bus receives a yellow tag, they have 60-day security repairs. They need to fax in the inspection form back to the state inspector with a list of what repairs were done. You can see, this is essentially one year's information along with one file on the specific bus. The reports associated with our transportation department and the maintenance of the bus are extremely thorough. I applaud our transportation department in terms of how they maintain their records. We've asked specific questions about not only our fleet, but also specific buses. We've been able to really get right down to which bus had an issue, where was the, where was the rust hole the size of a nickel? Those types of questions are able to be answered. We did not receive any red flags and red tags from the end in 2014. The same report kind of referenced a police report where, of course, made relative to breaking. And so I did provide you with some specific information relative to that bus itself. And all of the inspections related to that bus are in your packet. To note, we've had that bus in our possession for a few years, not received a yellow tag here. It did receive a yellow tag. It was previously owned by Manchester, was one of the buses used. And we were able to ascertain there was a side emergency window or emergency door issue in 2005. So that bus, along with the rest of the buses that are carrying students to their schools, are effectively well, very well maintained, very well managed. Because if you look, and I included, I want to include in the end, 48 bus fleet, average age of 14 years, averaging 139,000 miles, that information is attached. So, you know, the always work is going into making sure that our bus, these buses we have, while old, while beginning to age and deal with those issues, are extremely safe for our students. So again, I applaud Patty Hanes and her staff to do the work they do for us.
I think I can speak for the entire board that we have the utmost confidence and appreciation for the work that the transportation department does. You guys, you know, get the kids first in the morning, last in the evening, you do a great job. So.
You know, I have a question on the, of the age of the fleet and the miles. How does that, we have any idea how that compares to other districts?
Annie?
We definitely have one of the oldest fleets in the state. I think we're in the 5 percentile of the oldest fleet in the state. The, the other districts have pretty much two buses a year in, in, you know, like if you're looking at comparatively to Manchester, Chelsea, Mylan, and Dexter, they tend to do two to three purchases a year with their body money compared to us. So they do do that 10-year rotation. Pretty much they'll leave their, their transportation department at 10 years normally.
And so I'll use the example of a bus that's articulated in there. That bus was approximately 10 years old when we took possession of it. And that's been our model for a while now. It's not unlike purchasing a car. The price of a new bus versus the price of a used bus, there's a significant depreciation that occurs. So we were able to find value in that. Is that the best long-term strategy to build an entire fleet when you're looking at a 48-bus fleet? I can't say that it is. And one of the things that we were going to talk, Patty was going to say, in a perfect world, what does that rotation look like? What is best practice for a rotation schedule? Because by the same token, if we were to pass on the idea of buying 48 new buses, it's not an effective strategy either. And so we need to kind of really look at, is the model that the other districts locally are using the best model? What are the models that are out there? And how can we both be efficient and effective in terms of rebuilding a really aged fleet?
Are their fleet sizes similar to ours? I mean.
No, ours is larger. Because, you know, because we have the 5,300 students, you know, we're the second in the county. So theirs are not as large. But if you really think about Manchester, they tend to, this year, they're only purchasing one, but they only. one, but they only have 13 buses in their fleet, but, you know, they sell two a year. So we've been fortunate to do that because you are purchasing from somebody that you do know it, you know, know from. But, you know, the key to that is too, is that this year I can only purchase two from there. We did actually Friday go look at the possibility of two in Chelsea. So, but next year, Manchester will possibly have none for us. So that also is something to think about in the future also, that they may not, because if they don't test their buns, it's another issue.
I mean, that's kind of a critical part of our, our fine talking is buses.
How many kids are we transporting a day?
About 3,400 students a day.
What's, what's that percentage?
Oh, 53, well, this is for, I'll put you two on the... I asked the question. So about, you know, it's 3,400 out of our 5300, so.
So I think the reason I bring it up is because I don't think folks understand that that many kids are on the bus. You know, everybody thinks that mom and dad are dropping them off, and that's not the case, obviously. So, you know, that's going to be a big part of, if we're going for the bottom, buses definitely need to be on the list.
Yeah, I think that if you look at that current model that we have, it's really a model that we've kind of been forced into, because we don't have operating budget dollars for that, you know? Because if we did that, we'd take money out of the classroom, and I hope that's a good option. But as Chief highlighted, you know, this is going to be a big part of the top proposal, is refreshing that fleet. And it's really, in my mind, a safety issue. And that, when we have a fleet of this age, there, you know, at some point, there will be, you know, mechanical issues.
Having responsibility.
Yeah.
30, what did you say, 3200 kids?
3,400 kids.
3,400 kids.
Yeah, and parents have the expectation, you know, when their students leave in the morning, that they'll return home safely at night. And that's a huge responsibility. And that means that we have to make sure that our fleet is roadworthy, which I think it is, and I commend Superintendent Grayden and President Heineck for pulling this data, because, you know, we need to pull this out into the light. And because when you see media reports that, you know, 12 yellow citations or whatever, you know, red flags start going up. So I think this, you know, kind of checkmate stat, that we're doing the right things with our fleet. What we have on the road is roadworthy, but we certainly need to refresh that fleet.
And I have a recommended motion to authorize the following items on the consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, F.
All moved.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. On the next agenda.
RTI presentation that'll be done again at the high school, the RTI team from the high school. And our, again, to know, I mean, will be held at the high school at 6:30, we'll have a tour beginning at 6:00, so we'll be in the media center, and Dr. Halber and her team will be showing us around the high school.
This is the second opportunity for the public to address the board briefly after three minutes. Is there any public comment? Our next meeting will be March 24th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, and we will be in the high school media center, just as a reminder. And I have a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of March 10, 2015 at 7:45 PM.
It's a 2:00 before.
We'll set it even over my bureau.
I have a second. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor, you can signify by saying aye. Aye.